Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Thank you very much, trustees. This is the time of year where we have lots of commendations. There could be almost every student, every teacher, for all that they have been doing. But these are just a few that have come across our desk here in Communications, and we want to share them and make them official commendations here at the board meeting. We'll start off with commendations to the 31 elementary teachers for their work to pilot two English language arts programs, which led to the recommendation to adopt Benchmark ELA resources. Also commendations to the 26 secondary teachers who helped pilot two secondary math programs, leading to the recommendations to adopt the Envision AGA math program. In both cases, the teachers spent a year learning the new curriculum resources and collaborating with other teachers and the pilot team to recommend a resource that will best support Dearborn students. Teachers spent hundreds of hours studying and implementing one of the two programs. So commendations to all of them who have been part of that, and I know we just heard quite a bit about that. Moving on to high school, the Exchange Club of Dearborn is proudly announcing its annual Academic Excellence Award for the valedictorians at our three traditional high schools. Each valedictorian will receive a $1,500 scholarship. Traditionally, they would be here at the board meeting, and unfortunately, we're not able to have them here virtually with us. So this is why we are reading the Exchange Club's scholarships here at the commendations part of the meeting. So the valedictorians include Ahmed Al Shamini from Edsall Ford and Cindy Hakim from Dearborn High. Fortson co-valedictorians are Mahdi Hassan Abdullah and Ibrahim Nasr Kassam, and they will split the scholarship. In addition to the scholarship, each student will receive a special graduation stole to wear during commencement, and we'll talk more about that later on as well. And the Exchange Club of Dearborn has existed for nearly 95 years. Throughout these years, the men and women of Exchange have raised funds for many local community programs and projects. We have many, many local organizations that provide scholarships to our students, and we try to recognize them as much as we can and as best we can during different events such as our board meetings and other celebrations that typically take place this time of year. Moving on, commendations to the 169 student athletes from Dearborn High and the 146 from Fortson who are named KLAa Scholar Athletes for the 2019-20 school year. Students must achieve a 3.25 or higher cumulative GPA and earn a varsity letter in KLAa-sponsored sports during the school year to be eligible for this recognition. And not to leave out our awesome friends at Edsall Ford High School. Commendations to the 97 Edsall Ford High School athletes who are named Scholar Athletes for the Down River League. As you know, our high schools are in two different leagues. Commendations to the student journalists at Dearborn High on their efforts to publish the final edition of the Pioneer Press for the 2019-20 school year. The students were able to work virtually to research, write, edit, and publish the final senior edition. Special thanks to teacher and Pioneer Press faculty advisor Michael Schmidt for continuing to work with his journalism students and oversee the successful production during the current continuation of learning plan. It's always tough to put together a monthly paper to meet all the deadlines and hit all the deadlines. To do it virtually, as these students did, is quite impressive. So very deserving of this commendation. Commendation and special thanks to Edsall Ford parent Ms. Angela Parent-Hag for her generous donation of homemade, comfortable, and fashionable face masks. The masks have been made available to Edsall Ford staff who may need them when entering the building. And commendations to Dearborn High sophomore Amina Ferris, who is named to the MHSAA's Student Advisory Council as a representative of the class of 2022. Congratulations to all of our students who will be moving on into another grade for next year and those graduating, and we want to thank and congratulate all of them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mustaine. Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Just a couple of quick donations here. A donation of $460 has been offered to the Dearborn Public Schools by an anonymous donor to the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used to provide lunch to the food service workers and have continued, who have continued to provide meals to students and their families. Almost 65,000 meals a week and going strong. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Saliner Intermediate by the E.W. Edwin C. Levy Company to be used for drinking fountain filters at that school. And that is all the donations.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Regular P-12 meeting, May 11, 2020. Board Report 19-129. Regular Policy Committee, sorry, Policy Committee meeting, May 12, 2020. Board Report 19-130. Finance Committee meeting, June 1, 2020. Board Report 19-131. And the recommended action is to make any necessary correction and move approval of these minutes. Samud?
Saiga.
We have a motion that was moved by trustee McDonald and supported by trustee Mead. Are there any corrections, questions, or discussions? Trustee Lane?
On the regular meeting minutes at page 14, I would just like to have added that I noted that the class we were discussing graduation again at the part two of the meeting at about nine minutes and 45 seconds in, I noted that the class of 2020 will be remembered for its sacrifice for the health of the greater good. So I would like to have that mentioned. That class has lost a lot, but their sacrifice has been for others, and they'll always be remembered for that.
Great, thank you. Are there any others? Okay, here are none. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Lane, yes. McDonald, yes. Mead?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Patch Lekoff?
Yes.
Thorp?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes. The motion passes. Please attach a unanimous roll call vote. Thank you. Next item, please.
Tonight, there are no special reports, so we are now at citizen participation. We do have a list of blue cards. So those citizens who are wishing to address the board on the agenda and non-agenda items for action did complete a blue card by 6:10, I believe it was. And these will be read by the board secretary. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items or agenda items. So speakers should not anticipate a response at this time. I don't believe any of them mentioned the names of students or school district employees. And obviously, as normal, the board president has the right to limit times. I will read them now. If you concur, President Barry.
Please.
Okay, the first person is...
Can I make a comment? Sorry, President Barry. I received a message that number 29 is requested to poll, line 29.
Line 29. I'm sorry.
On the sheet.
I put it on your sheet, Mary.
Okay, I'm going to have to go and get the newest, greatest...
Oh, okay.
Okay. I will refresh my list here. So 29, I will not read them.
That was the request.
Okay, all right. So...
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
It's gonna be 29 on the spreadsheet, but if you're looking at the Google Doc, it's comment 22.
There are 22 of these? Oh, boy.
There's actually more. There's actually a total of 25 comments total. There were, there were four comments that came in that had no name or address. So they'll be in the spreadsheet, but they will not be in the other document.
Okay, I am not reticent to read the comments or the names. I'm just, you will all have to exercise your greatest patience with me because I don't have my mouse in, so I have to scroll down carefully. First comment is from Mrs. Aziza Jerush of Dearborn. She's apparently representing herself. "I'm a mom of an elementary student. I go to..." Okay, I'm gonna start my scrolling. "I go to school and work as well. While my son is in school, I wanted to know if school is going to open up with the regular days and hours like before, Monday through Friday, 8:35 to 3:35. I have been hearing different comments about half of the students going on two days and the other half on the other two days, and I was wondering if that is a possibility. I just wanted to ask that you keep as working and studying us..." It should be "working and studying" parents in mind because that won't work out for us. "Daycare is not affordable by the majority of parents. Thank you, and I'm sure you will make the best decision for us all." Comment number two is from Mrs. Lisa Crum, representing the Edsall Ford Class of 2020 parent group. Here is her comment. "Let's talk about a normal graduation ceremony, whether it be limited guests off-site or a couple of ceremonies for each school. Not the drive-by, hang-out-the-window type other cities and states are doing it. Please take into consideration what the students have given up, lost, out on already. Please don't cut the conversation in half, everyone I speak with. On behalf of the schools, school wants this for their student. I understand the city has multiple high schools. Thank you for the Class of 2020 parent rep." Next comment is from Mrs. Jane Mazza. Her comment, she is representing, she is from Dearborn and representing the Dearborn Federation of Teachers. "Good evening, board members and Dr. Maleko. As president of the Dearborn Federation of Teachers, speaking in opposition to the purchase of Benchmark Advanced 2021 ELA curriculum and the Envision AGA math curriculum, the cost of these two products is over $2.3 million. Currently, DPS is in a budget deficit caused by the COVID-19 closure effects on the state of Michigan revenues. This is a purchase that can be placed on hold until the district has recovered from the deficit. Due to this deficit, the DPS is looking into reducing staffing for the 2021 school year. The cost of not purchasing this new curriculum would protect approximately 30 teaching positions. This is not the time to reduce the teaching staff. Our students and families need the support and teaching skills of our dedicated staff." Okay. Next comment is from Mr. Gerald Kraszewski, who comments thusly. "This year, there's an unusual amount of teachers leaving the Dearborn school system and going to other districts, even accepting lower wages. Does it concern any board members that Dearborn is losing award-winning experienced teachers? Dearborn has invested in these teachers who are now going to other districts. Does anyone investigate what is happening in the schools to cause this mass exodus? Isn't it better for our children to be educated by experienced teachers? At a school board meeting on February 12, 2019, it was brought up that the teachers in Dearborn teach in fear quotations. It hasn't anything, why hasn't anything been done since then? This has been happening too long before the coronavirus pandemic. I have personally spoken to several teachers in the district, and the stories they have told me of administrative harassment are shocking." Next comment from Janelle Powers of Dearborn, representing, it looks like the name of a student. "I wish to comment on the proposed cancelling of the music program at O.L. Smith Middle School." I believe this is the following of her comment, although it's displaying awkwardly for me. "Instrumental music has been an integral part of our family's life." I think this is the next person, Ms. Eva Harrison's comment. I cannot see anything else from Ms. Powers. So the next one is from Eva Harrison. "Instrumental music has been," she is, sorry, "representing O.L. Smith Band Orchestra cuts." And it's from Dearborn. "Instrumental music has been an integral part of our family's life. Our son has idolized his sister playing in the EFHS marching band. He will be going into sixth grade at O.L. Smith Middle School this fall, and we were just told that the instrumental teacher position has been cut. This is devastating, not only to our son, but to the program at the high school level as well. Without students who feed up to the high school program, it will not survive. Music education is too important to let it collapse, especially during this time when we all need to come together." Next comment is from Mr. Michael Mackey. "Wish the music programs at STEM and Smith schools to continue. Music is," I think he meant vital, it says vile. Mr. Brian Bacon of Clinton Township, representing 40 years of teaching experience and a longer residency in southeast Michigan, 20 years' experience as a mathematics department head. There is a clear link between access to the arts, music, physical education, and student four-, eight-, and 10-year outcomes. What are you doing to ensure the safety and success of these programs? Special education programs have allowed a significant deaf community to flourish in my hometown. What are you doing to ensure that these essential programs remain funded?" Next comment from Amal M. Berry of Dearborn, representing parents. "I understand O.L. Smith's musical program will be cut for the next school year. I can't begin to tell you how disturbing this action is by DPS. The music program has enriched the lives of my children and many others. How can we cut funds on this enrichment program that has developed strength, talent, leadership, and overall well-being for our kids during a time of unrest, pandemics, and racial divide? The last thing we need to do is cut a program that celebrates the mind and soul of children in our district. This is simply unacceptable and must be reconsidered." Next comment from Mr. Douglas Rulo of Dearborn, representing, and I believe this is a student's name, so I won't read it. Comment is, "It has recently been brought to my attention that the band and orchestra program will be cut for the 2021 school year at O.L. Smith. This is a great concern to me, as I firmly believe that the arts are a very important part of a well-rounded education. I know that there are tough decisions that are going to be made for the upcoming school year, but this program needs to be left intact. Thank you for consideration regarding this matter." And he signs his name, and he is an O.L. Smith and Duval Elementary parent. Next comment from Mrs. Rebecca Valentine of Dearborn, representing O.L. Smith. Comment is, "We are opposed to O.L. Smith cutting their band and orchestra. I start with a question. Why is that when thinking about budget cuts, music, and art come to mind first? Why do you believe these are expendable? When you take away band and orchestra, you are taking away an opportunity for our kids to be able to find what they are, food, I think that should be good at, or love. It's not a class or after-school activity to them. It's so much more. It is a community that they have found and can express their creativity side. Find friendships, help them navigate through finding themselves. They will never get the opportunity to find their full potential and experience what music can bring to them. As parents, you want your children to have every opportunity out there. Your son or daughter could be that professional violinist or drummer of a band. Where do you think the people who bring us the music started? They started in band and orchestra. Music isn't just a class. It is therapy. We all have a song we hear that reminds us of a time in our life. Psychologists use music as therapy for patients. The importance of music is crucial to children's development. Do not cut these programs." Okay. I see a comment here, but I do not see the name. It may be someone who left a comment without a name. And I don't see phone number or address, but shall I read the comment, President Barry?
Name, I would probably say, I would go ahead and say no.
There is no name here.
And just go after the next one, then.
Okay, all right.
Please.
Trying to do that. This is quite a long comment. Okay, the next one, I'm sorry if I did miss that, but I don't see the name in there. David maybe can correct me while I'm reading this, if there was a name to that. The next one is from Mrs. Eileen Morton of Dearborn. Her comment is, "O.L. Smith is already lacking in extracurricular activities for the children who do not play sports compared even to the middle schools in our own district. This is telling students who do not participate in athletics that they are not important. Creative thinkers are going to be the next innovators of this country, and you are basically saying that they will not be coming from Smith. You are basically, you are cutting off my daughter's musical education, one that she enjoys, and she will never be able to catch up to her peers once she is in high school. Also, assuming that this is budgetary, what are you planning to do with the students who had band as an elective? Adding to the teacher-student ratio to other..." I'm sorry, somebody just moved the screen. "...to other elective classes that they have no interest in? Or are you planning to hire another elective teacher, which then, of course, defeats the budget argument? It is very difficult to reinstate a music program into a school that it has been cut from the budget, as shown throughout the country. I am so disappointed with this decision. I am now very much considering changing districts. I guess it should be money first, students second." Next comment is from Carol Reynoso of Dearborn, who says, "I recently learned that O.L. Smith is cutting their music program for next year. As a parent of three children who have greatly benefited from the music program in the district, I hope the Board of Education will take action to ensure that music and the arts are maintained in our schools for some students. This is the area where they shine and where they have the most positive experiences during their school day. We have experienced excellence in music education in Dearborn from elementary to high school years, and I hope this continues for all students." Next comment from Madeline Stevens of Dearborn, representing all Dearborn schools. "With such large budget cuts and not knowing what the fall will bring, why are there not more summer fundraisers to help raise money for the schools? Each school board PTA could conduct their own. For example, Whitmore Bowls and O.L. Smith could hold a few summertime fundraisers to help keep their band program alive and other programs at Whitmore. No elective should be cut. It is no fault of a child that we must make budget cuts." That's do our best to get creative and do fundraisers over the summer to help keep programs like band and other electives. Okay, next pro, next comment is from Sarah Harrison of Dearborn, representing O.L. Smith Band and Orchestra Program. "Hello, I'm a graduate of Maples Elementary, O.L. Smith, and Dearborn High School. I was involved in the band program at all of these buildings heavily, and that experience helped shape my life. I am currently a music educator in Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Without my experience at these buildings, I would never have gone on to receive two music degrees and teach the thousands of children over my 14 years in education. During my time at O.L. Smith, I was able to try out many different instruments, find a group of friends who had the same interests, learn responsibility, become a leader, and discover I had talent many others did not possess. It gave me enough confidence to go to Dearborn High School not knowing anyone, as all of my friends went to Edsall. I met my husband in the band program at Dearborn High School. These programs have value for students. They give them a home and help them find themselves. My nephew and countless others will not be able to find that home next year as you take it away. My niece is thriving at Edsall Ford High School because she was able to be in O.L. Smith Band program. In a time of uncertainty during a pandemic, taking away a place of comfort and somewhere for students to call home just because you think it should be at the forefront, I'm sorry, it does not fit your budget is reckless. Social and emotional learning should be at the forefront of your thinking, and band, orchestra, and choir classes provide that for students. I currently have a two-year-old, and this makes me question whether or not I want to send my children to Dearborn schools. Is school district I value in..." To send my, to Dearborn Public Schools, a school district value in the future? Next comment. Mrs. Sylvia Gibson of Dearborn, cutting the music program. She's representing. Their comment is this. "Just received an email that the music program will be cut. I think this is a horrible idea. Music helps students grow. They learn so much from it. My daughter has been in band since fifth grade. I have watched her grow into a more confident person and become a better student. She has an amazing teacher, Mr. Wolf." I'm sorry, is one heck of a teacher. By use, stopping all fundraising to the program, a lot of students are gonna miss out on so much. They are a family, not just a class. You may want to rethink this one." Next comment, Mrs. Shayna Moritz from Dearborn, representing, looks like the name of her child. Comment is, "This is terrible to cut music. Incoming sixth graders have only just begun an interest in music and playing instruments. They just choose their elective, chose their electives, were crying out loud, and now you're going to take it away from them? Haven't our children lost enough this past school year?" Comment from Mrs. Erica Serputkowski of Dearborn. I'm sorry if I've mispronounced that, representing O.L. Smith. "I'm concerned about music being cut from O.L. Smith. It would be a disservice to the kids to remove the music program. Music has been proven to be, to improve learning for students. These students would also be at a disadvantage when it's time for high school music if they lose out on three years. Not everyone can afford private lessons." Another comment below is from Mrs. Victoria Gonzalez of Dearborn. "I was informed today that the principal at O.L. Smith is going to cut the music program next year. My daughter is currently in band and has participated since fifth grade. She plans on continuing band throughout high school. This will be devastating to her and many other students if this program gets cut. She already suffers from severe anxiety, and middle school has been a bit rough for her. She has found a place with these band and orchestra students. Her brother graduated this year from Edsall Ford and started in fifth grade with Dearborn Music Program. We cannot let this program get cut. The arts are so important for so many students. Please keep the music orchestra going at O.L. Smith. Thank you." Next comment, Mrs. Melissa Lage from Dearborn, representing, her students' names are listed. "Please don't cut band orchestra programs from the middle school level. Kids need these programs to learn music and socialize. The band gives them a sense of pride and helps them to develop, helps mentally and prepares them for life events by learning how to work as a whole and performing in front of a crowd. My daughter has been performing under Mr. Wolf for four years, five to eight, and it's taught her so much. She is so proud of herself every time they perform march or just simply learn a new song. My son, his name, just finished fifth grade band and was really looking forward to expanding his learning next year in sixth. There are other places that could be cut, but fine arts isn't one of them. Please consider asking for donations from parents before making a final decision. Thanks for your time." asking for donations from parents before making a final decision. Thanks for your time. Ms. Ms. Robin McLeod of Dearborn, representing O.L. Smith and Duval, says, I have learned that there are again plans to cut band and orchestra at O.L. Smith. This is devastating news. Music programs are so very important. Smith Band and Orchestra students make up over fifty percent of the band and orchestra at Edsel. Cutting these classes will ensure that the band and orchestra at Edsel will also soon be decimated and killed. My understanding is that band and orchestra still will still continue to be offered at Bryant. Why is my daughter not offered the same opportunity? If we are giving up on orchestra, we are giving up on all high achieving kids that is, that it is important to. Offering music at some schools in the district and not others is unfair. Will border exceptions be granted for all those children that want the same access? Some kids at Smith are taking two gym classes a day. What is being done to drive interest in music programs at the elementary and middle school level? This is devastating news to the parents and children of the entire Edsel Ford feeder system. We are not being given the same access and opportunity to learn music that other schools in the district are. Next comment. I do not see a name on this one. David, do you see a name? It's a very long one here. It looks like it's the last one. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Okay, this is line twenty nine, and this is the card that's being pulled. Finally, Ms. Ms. Michelle Kerr of Dearborn says, please consider keeping the O.L. Smith Music Program. In the nation's current climate, our community must not deprive children of interactive learning, leadership, and cognitive skills to save dollars.
Trustee Elaine?
Yes.
Line seventeen, Mr. Tom Lackey. I believe we missed that one.
Okay, I will try to, sorry, as I say, it's really hard to scroll without my mouse. I'm mouse impaired. I'm moving up there, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Seventeen, okay, I see the. Okay.
Yeah, it is a longer, it is a longer comment.
One that I couldn't find the name for. Band and orchestra at O.L. Smith being eliminated. I just found out literally ten minutes ago from the band and orchestra teacher that the program might be eliminated next year. I realize that there might not be a whole lot of people in the band and orchestra. However, there, in my opinion, is enough. I have done nothing but promote Dearborn Schools through this COVID crisis, along with supporting teachers and administration one hundred percent in disciplinary decisions in the past years. This decision is not only disheartening to myself, but to my kids who have put so much time into this program for the past two years. What does this decision tell our kids? Work hard, advance in an art, but we as a district can take it all away? That is absolutely terrible message to send. For all of the positive things that have gone on in the district these past years, this will truly be one I won't be able to stomach and will significantly affect my support for the district and its leaders as a whole going forward. There are other classes being offered in the district that my, that my eyes should be on the chopping that in my eyes should be on the chopping block first, such as keyboarding. Keyboarding, really? And woodworking? Keyboarding, woodworking over band orchestra? Come on. Unfortunately, in order to have these unique classes, our kids and all others are, all others interested in these programs will need to attend a private school or move to another school district who has the funds and intelligence to keep music programs alive. The foundation of any city is strongly connected to its schools and what is offered by them. This is a huge setback for both the district and the city as more and more are leaving for other destinations. I pay very large amount in school tax each year compared to other larger cities, and as each year goes by, I'm less for my money, this, this being an excellent example. I sincerely hope that the board and other leaders reconsider the possible decision and far reaching effects.
Was it the last one?
Uh, no, I'm trying to. It's, it's jump, I'm sorry, this is an Excel sheet, and it jumps a bit.
That's fine, that's fine.
David, maybe you can see, I cannot get the last line. It's not showing on my screen. It wants to jump down to eighteen.
Yeah, let me.
I can see it, Mary. It says, consider the possible decision and the far reaching effects it will have on parents wanting to move into the city or others deciding it's time to move on.
Thank you.
First of all, trustee Elaine, nothing to be sorry about. Thank you very much.
Good job. That was a lot.
Yeah. Are there any comments on any of the items before we move forward? Anyways, Dr. Maleko?
Just make a comment that Ms. Farage and the middle school principals will be talking about staffing, and again, just a reminder that this is part of the course requests system, and, you know, we're dealing with budget reductions, but there's been no official decisions on any specific staffing. They're preliminary, and we always want to run the music programs, but it's also based on student interest and course requests. So Ms. Farage will be getting the report, and Dr. Chope will be working on it to, obviously, we value the music programs and the arts as we've mentioned, and so just wanted to mention that our students have done great things with the arts and music, and so we will, I'll be looking at that a little further as well.
Before we move on, I'll make, I'll make a statement on, like, and I can honestly say that all of us, all of my colleagues, including myself, we value the arts, we value the music, we value athletics. Yes, we always while, while on the students. So yes, I am looking forward to those reports, to the parents that spoke. We're thankful that, yes, you send your kids to our district, and yes, you support our district financially. I know sometimes decisions, tough decisions have to be made, but we look forward, as a board, we look forward to more information, and we'll go from there. If there's nothing else, we'll go to the next item, please, Madam Secretary.
The next item. President Barry, sorry. Yeah, I can ask this and, and the request for information part, but I would like to know from Dr. Maleko if this decision or these decisions were to go move forward, are they from a budget perspective, or are they from a lack of interest in the program or lack of numbers? So would like that to be included in the report as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.